...conformance and not require the variance for the FAR. So I'll just make that best.
All right, thank you. And who would like to speak next? Are there any other speakers? Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bill Blansky. My address is 109 East 26th, apartment number three. Unlike my neighbors who have decades of presence in the neighborhood, I'm brand new. They just moved in a month ago. And I live in the building that's immediately to the west of this site. So our building shows up on the site drawings. I have just three things that I'd like to say, and hopefully they'll be very concise. First of all, along with many of our neighbors, we're delighted to see that something is happening on the empty lot. It is an investment that the community, that the state has made, and it's wonderful to see something happening, and we've logged that, and we're excited that something is coming. About the design of the building, there are some things about it that are just right. It's got things that really work well. It's right in a lot of the massing. It's right in a lot of the materials, especially the idea of using white brick, and it's resonating with the arts program to the north with MCAD and the MIA is delightful. And also, it has some good things going with the plan, that all the massing is toward Stevens and 26th, for example, is appropriate on that block. But it needs work in all three of those areas as well. So I'd like to appeal to the commission that we maybe wait on the approval of this and let the project get more neighborhood influence, like the Whittier Clinic we received a few years back, and like the, I think it's the Icebox and the Vertical Endeavors Park, when the Current did that concert there this summer, that was awesome. The neighborhood needs more of that kind of involvement in order to get a better solution so that a lot of these issues that come from the 200 signatures could be better mitigated. So that's my third request, that there be a pause in the approval, that it be approved, but not under these metrics, and that the neighborhood be offered the chance to have some input, to make it a better design. I think there's good precedent that that can happen in Whittier. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? If there is no one, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, we have three applications, of course: conditional use permit for height, variance to the FAR, and a site plan review. Are there any questions, or would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner McGreeno? Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Kronzer.
Thank you, President Brown. I'd like to move, get the ball rolling here, conditional use permit to increase the height of the building. I move staff recommendation to approve and add a second, third, and fourth condition. And I have a handout coming. But I will read that as you, actually, excuse me, just a second condition with some sub-points. So condition number two is work with staff to upgrade and relocate and reallocate exterior materials on the project, including but not limited to upgrading the materials at the corner of 26th and Stevens on floors two through five to metal panel or better, to the extents of the currently designed cornice, so that corner framing that. Secondly, revise the location of materials to make them contiguous, removing the alternating sections of different materials. And three, revise the fiber cement type to a pattern of four-inch and eight-inch lap siding and a little of hardyboard panels. And I can make a few comments.
All right, is there a second? Okay, you can state your comments.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, this is a tough site to redevelop. It's been polluted forever. I think the general FAR and height requests are appropriate. I think the exterior building design needs a little work, as just described. I have provided a little diagram with these notes to staff to help the conversation along. As far as the corner, I think the corner of 26th and Stevens is kind of the crown jewel, and it needs to read more as a continuous thing, a little bit better materials. Even though nichia is not technically considered fiber cement, it is fiber cement, and almost the entire building is fiber cement, less the first floor. So, you know, corrugated metals, metal shingles, there's lots of relative inexpensive products out there. To make the materials more contiguous, you know, we've got a lot of plate tectonics, sorry, I thought this was really less, going on, more pangea, you know, having more similar, more materials together, less joints between the different materials, I think will help a lot. And then the fiber cement lap siding, I think is just more contextual. It's got a different rhythm, it's got a different pattern, you get more shadow lines. You can have a lot of fun playing with revealed sizes. So I think that'll help really take this building that is relatively flat and articulate in a way that's more appropriate. So those are my comments.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Kronzer. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd actually like to add another condition that the, that there, so I think the right way to say this is that the fifth story would step back along the south edge by 10 feet from the fourth floor.
All right, we have a third condition added, requiring that the fifth story of the building step back along the south edge by one floor. Is there a second to adding that condition? There. All right, we have a motion and a second. Okay, yeah, if you don't mind speaking to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, I'm, thank you for everyone who came to speak, and I think that our, these changes may not be fully addressing everyone's concerns, but I'm very sympathetic, particularly because of the request for a bulkier building that would normally be allowed, to the concern about how it's interacting on the south side of the building. And I think this step back is reasonable to help it meet the conditions of really blending into the surrounding buildings.
All right. And so, well, let's see, why don't we vote on adding that condition? Commissioner Rockwell, do you have some comments on that?
I have another condition. Should I table it?
Yeah, let's just hang tight for a moment and vote on adding that condition to the original motion that is related to stepping back the fifth story on the south edge of the building. And we can do that by a voice vote. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and that motion carries. Before we move on to an additional condition, I want to go back to the condition that Commissioner Kronzer suggested in his original motion. I was just going to ask Commissioner Kronzer, do you think this may be as better suited for the site plan application rather than the height CUP, or was there a reason you preferred it to be included?
I think when you look at buildings requesting more height, that discussing the way it's articulated is appropriate for a CUP.
Okay, okay. And secondly, some of the language in your condition, which I didn't, I wasn't able to completely write down, is very specific. I'm wondering if maybe we can make it a little bit more broad, just so that staff has a little bit of leeway in working with the applicant on that. Would you be comfortable with that? I don't, I would need to think about it a little bit. Maybe Mr. Wittenberg can offer a suggestion in the meantime, and maybe we can go to Commissioner Rockwell.
I'd like to offer another condition, which is to include three three-bedroom apartments within the unit as a condition of the increased story. I can speak to, speak to that rationale.
Okay, well, let's see first if there's a second to that motion. Is there a second to add three-bedroom units to the building? All right, and Mr. Wittenberg, you had that comment.
Commissioners, that's just a caution about mandating a particular unit mix within a building. Not only is it not real closely related to the CUP for height, but it's not something that the commission has typically taken on as our mandate. There's no particular zoning regulations that, or not even a clear policy basis for mandating a particular number of bedrooms or a particular unit mix in a development. So I'd just be very cautious about that.
All right. Commissioner Rockwell, do you have anything to add?
Well, I do have specific policy rationale, which are sections in the comprehensive plan, section 1.8.1, section 3.6.1, and section 3.6.2, which are respectively, create a range of housing types, to create housing suitable for needs over time, and to create housing that meets the needs of households of different sizes. And I realize I am a newer member here, and so I'm still getting used to our jurisdiction, if this isn't within our jurisdiction. My rationale, just briefly, is that I do think that this neighborhood is a neighborhood amenable for families. And we have, our first applicant here has a new family next to this project. And it is, by adding, I believe that by adding additional density into this site, creating space for families within that site and within this neighborhood, as a, and this would be a very small percentage of the total, would make sense. There is a school two blocks from this site, and another school about five blocks from this site. So there, that is my, that's the rationale.
Okay, so is there any, Commissioner McGreeno, do you have a comment on that motion? No, okay. Are there, is there any other discussion on this motion? If there is none, we probably, since we have a motion and a second, Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I just wanted to echo what staff had mentioned. I agree with the sentiment of this and the desire of the community to see different unit types. I am concerned about our legal authority to allow that, so I won't be supporting the motion. Certainly, it could work its way through the appeal process as well, but I, you know, where my understanding of our policy guidance and where that sort of crosses over into regulatory policy, which, you know, we're guided by the comprehensive plan, it's mall area plans, is our policy guidance, it's our zoning code that really regulates the legal basis for our decisions, I just think this moves too far, where we don't have clear policy guidance that gives us the ability to require this particular desire.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Mr. Wittenberg? This, yeah, yeah, excuse me, this motion is on the condition related to requiring three-bedroom units in the building. If there's no discussion, I think we might do a roll call. Vote. So clerk, please call.
Bender?
No.
Gisselman?
No.
Kronzer?
Nope.
McGreeno?
Aye.
Rockwell?
No, my own.
And Slack?
No.
All right, and that motion fails unanimously. Okay. Sorry about that, Commissioner Rockwell. Okay, so we do have a motion and a second on the conditional use permit. We've added a condition related to stepping back the fifth story. Is there any further discussion? And I may check with Mr. Wittenberg again before we vote on that, just confirming that the language proposed by Commissioner Kronzer for the second condition is adequate for staff to work with, or are there any suggestions there? And Mr. Wittenberg?
Mr. President, and commissioners, it just strike, it does strike me that some of the recommended conditions related to materials are only loosely related to the CUP to increase height. I don't know that I've seen us regulate the width of lap siding, for example, through a conditional use permit to increase height. In addition, in an instance where they, a project complies with our guidance for materials, seems like a little bit of a overreach perhaps to require yet a further upgrading of materials. So just throw that out for the commission's consideration.
Okay. Commissioner McGreeno?
Could we, because the paper that we had had a few different things, and it sounds like we were going to put them all into one condition, could we just read what exactly that condition is, just so we have like clear guidance? I mean, is it just these two sentences together?
Yeah, maybe Commissioner Kronzer, if you'd like to read your original language.
Sure. The original language is, "Work with staff to upgrade and reallocate the exterior materials on the project, including but not limited to upgrading the material at the corner of 26th and Stevens on floors two through five to metal panel or better, where the currently designed cornice is, left to right. Revis the location of the materials to make them contiguous, removing alternating sections of different materials. Three, revise the fiber cement type to a pattern of four- and eight-inch lap siding and a little of the panels."
Okay.
Thanks.
So that original language is still part of the motion. I don't know if anyone else has any revisions to that? All right. And is there any further discussion on this motion? And we have, we have three conditions at this point. Commissioner Gisselman?
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. I don't have any revisions, but I just wanted to make some remarks to those who are here who spoke today, just regarding, particularly regarding the vote that is imminent regarding the conditional use permit for height. Obviously, there are a number of you that spoke or had a lot of remarks about, particularly about the height of the project and the scale. Mr. Casala, you spoke first, congratulations regarding your new baby. But I just, I'm going to support the conditional use permit and the staff's recommendation here, specifically considering Commissioner Bender's modification to this item. And I just, you know, I just wanted to explain a little bit why, and that is, I mean, what I have trouble with is this is zone C2, and it's been zone C2 since, at least what I've seen in the report, at least back to 2005. And in that, under that zoning framework, I mean, the applicant has the ability to build the structure that's 56 feet high. In this situation, they've asked for a conditional use permit to add an additional five feet of height. And again, I don't, I mean, what I'm hearing is, from a scale perspective, I'm not sure that many of those who had comments today would be happy even with a 56-foot-high building in this situation. It sounds like it's, you know, it's a dramatic change to those of you in the neighborhood. But again, from a commission standpoint, we kind of have this framework we have to operate within, and for that reason, the way that it's zoned and what's already allowed to be placed there from a height perspective, and again, considering what I think softens a little bit based upon the addition by Commissioner Bender, I'm supporting the conditional use permit for height. But I just wanted to make some remarks, because I know that it's important to you, and I wanted you to hear that we're hearing you, that there, some of us have some rationale for why we're going to support this nevertheless.
Okay, is there any further discussion? No, the public hearing is now closed. If there is no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Slack?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
McGreeno?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Six, zero.
All right, and we have two applications remaining. Next, we have the variance and the site plan review. Commissioner?
I'd like to make a motion to approve variance to increase the maximum floor area ratio from 2.04 to 2.41.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Gisselman, then Commissioner Rockwell.
Just regarding the FAR, I just had a quick question for staff. Hillary, that's right. Obviously, we've heard a lot of comments about the toxicity of the site, and we've had this discussion previously before today in the committee, the whole meeting, that there were some remarks about, relating to the FAR, there were some remarks that 12 feet of soil could be removed, and then there could be below-grade parking, and then, you know, not only would apparently that address some of the toxicity concerns, I think, from what I heard, but also it could address the FAR matter. Can you just talk a little bit about the staff analysis of removing any of the soil or below-grade parking?
I did have a conversation with Tom Frame in our environmental services division about that specifically, and I think it comes down to, I mean, I think it comes down to cost to remove the soil versus putting the vapor barrier over the soil and billing on top of that. There's a, there is a cost differential to removing all of that and bringing it to a facility that can take it. So I didn't, I didn't specifically, I mean, yes, I believe you can remove it, but then it's, it comes down to the cost, or the added cost to the project, I would say.
And so I guess just, you know, just from my understanding and just thinking of what, you know, perhaps the perspective that some of the individuals who had comments today would say, they would say then, and I just want to know if this is somehow the staff looks at it, but is there an argument then to be made that in saving costs, to not have to remove the soil, which obviously is a benefit to the applicant, that they also, at the same time, are kind of getting it both ways, because we're also, we're also allowing them a variance to increase the FAR at the same time? I mean, is that, is that a fair way to look at it?
I mean, cost does not come into our evaluation of a project. We do look at the zoning code and the comprehensive plan, and for the reasons that we outlined in the staff report, those are the reasons that we're supporting both of those applications.
Okay, and thank you. I think that's the clarification that I was looking for, is that it isn't as though staff looks at the cost of the applicant and says, well, this is really expensive for you, so we wouldn't expect you to do this, but we'll also give you, you know, an advantage in some other regard, because you actually don't look at the cost to the applicant.
Correct. Unless there's public dollars going into it, we don't see a pro forma for development projects coming through our office.
Commissioner Rockwell?
I would like to suggest, but not move, until I hear my fellow commissioners react, so I don't vote myself down multiple times in one night. I would like to suggest a, an amendment to the FAR variance, which would be to not increase the FAR to 2.41, but to increase it to 2.38. And this may have already been accomplished with Commissioner Bender's suggestion of the 10-foot setback. The rationale is that the required findings for variance include finding practical difficulties in complying with the ordinance, because circumstances outside the, circumstances unique to the property. And here, the circumstances unique to the property, to me, is deemed to be the toxicity in the soil. So the toxicity in the soil prevents underground parking in any kind of financially feasible manner, and therefore precludes that 20% density bonus. So if that 20% density bonus were there, the total FAR, allowable FAR would be 2.38, which, again, seems to me to mitigate the practical difficulties that exist on this particular site. Again, this is a three one-hundredths of an FAR measure, so this may already be taken care of. Pretty minor, but I wanted to put it out there so that we've got a clear rational basis for the increase in FAR.
All right, thank you. Commissioner McGreeno?
And I just wanted to echo Commissioner Gisselman and Rockwell's comments about the difficulties with the site, especially considering it seems like there have been two proposals that are a bit smaller in the past decade that haven't penciled out, which seems to indicate that this is a, kind of a special circumstance.
Okay, so Commissioner Rockwell, would you, would it be okay if we turn that into a motion?
I will, I will move that we, yes.
Okay.
So the motion would be...
That's a, that's a motion to modify the initial motion language to changing, increasing the maximum floor area ratio to 2.38. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, I think we can vote on that. Let's start with a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries, so the motion language is modified. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve increasing the maximum FAR? Commissioner Gisselman?
Again, I just, I want those who spoke here today to understand, at least that, to me, your comments regarding the soil and regarding removal of the soil were heard. But again, I don't, I don't, it's, I don't, I personally don't believe it's within the purview of this commission to force the new applicant owner to deal with this pre-existing problem, that I think some of you who spoke acknowledged was perhaps, I'm sorry. I, okay, I understand you've had your opportunity to talk, and I'm just addressing some of the concerns. Again, I, some of you have acknowledged that this condition existed previously, and there were other blames that were suggested for, whether government oversight or something of this nature. But at this point, I think the city and the comprehensive plan wants development on this site, and I don't think that we have the authority to force the applicant to spend more to remove the soil if they have a different measure that they're putting in place to remediate the concern, which is a similar measure, at least from the ventilation standpoint that's been in place for many years now.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to approve item B? Seeing, seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
McGreeno?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Six, zero.
And finally, we have item C, the site plan review. Commissioner Kronzer?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to move staff recommendation to approve the site plan review with the six, five stated conditions, and I'd like to add a sixth condition, which is all window sill heights at the storefront to be 18 inches off the sidewalk, or approximately 18 inches off the sidewalk.
Okay, and maybe Commissioner Kronzer, you could just restate that condition so everyone can hear.
Certainly. That the window sill height for all storefront windows be approximately 18 inches off the sidewalk.
All right, we have a motion to approve the site plan review with the sixth condition related to window sill height. Is there a second? All right, Mr. Wittenberg?
Could I just clarify that that's the storefront windows and not the parking windows? Thank you.
All right, any further discussion on item C, the site plan review? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Slack?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
McGreeno?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Six, zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on that item, and also concludes our meeting. Our next meeting is October 19th. We have committee of the whole this Thursday, executive committee at 3:30 this Thursday. Otherwise, that will be all, and our meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting is October 19th. We have committee of the whole this Thursday, executive committee at 3:30 this Thursday. Otherwise, that will be all, and our meeting is adjourned.